This meeting will be held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been posted on the township website and sent to the newspaper of record. The agenda will be, has also been posted on the township website and the Bolton Board at the municipal building at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. The agenda will not necessarily be held in the order listed and the meeting will not continue substantially past ten thirty P M. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Roundtree. Ms. Pope.
Yeah.
Mr. Popolo.
Here.
Ms. Kingsley. Mr. Maderos. Mr. Kraut.
Here.
Monica. Mr. Sternheim.
Here.
Mr. Leo.
Here.
Heard we have the adoption of the minutes for the August sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I move to adopt the minutes of August twen- six, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Hey, any comments or questions from the board? Okay, um, is that a roll call?
No.
No, all in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Hey, great. Uh, next is the referral, uh, Township Council Resolution twenty-five dash two-six-six pertaining to the Terrace Two Redevelopment Plan, Lot seven oh two, Lot four and six, and portion of Block seven oh two, Lot seventeen point oh one. Four fifty-eight Springfield Avenue, two thirty Sherman Avenue, and four twenty-eight Springfield Avenue. Bill, do you make a?
Just, just briefly, uh, Mr. Chairman members of the board. Uh, this, this board, planning board back in May of two thousand twenty-four conducted a public hearing uh, with regard to properties at that time. It was Block seven oh two, Lots four, six, and sixteen to determine and make a recommendation as to whether or not that study area qualified as an area in need of redevelopment. And the board did make that recommendation, uh, to the Township Council. Uh, later that month, the Township Council adopted and, uh, the recommendation and did designate uh, that area as an area in need of, uh, redevelopment and authorized the, uh, Township's Affordable Housing Planner, Mr. Mestretta from Harvard Consultants, to prepare a redevelopment plan. And that plan has been prepared. And, uh, uh, last month in September, the Township Council, uh, passed resolution authorizing and directing the planning board to review the redevelopment plan in accordance with the local redevelopment housing law. And it's, it's similar to the, uh, planning board's, uh, review of an ordinance for consistency with the master plan. Uh, the, uh, section seven of the redevelopment, uh, law, uh, basically provides the prior to the adoption of the redevelopment plan. Uh, the planning board, uh, will review and recommend back to the Township Council uh, as to whether or not it's consistent with the township's master plan, or if there are any other uh, recommendations or additions to that. So the function of the planning board tonight is to review the plan. I think everybody's received the full redevelopment plan. Uh, Mr. Mestretta is here and he can give the full background and go over it and discuss it, and particularly in relationship to the master plan. He's here for any questions that the board members have. And, uh, at the end of the hearing, the board will then, uh, make a determination as to whether or not the, uh, the plan as prepared is consistent with the master plan and, and whether there are any additional recommendations. Uh, and you'll see that there was an actual form of resolution prepared by Redevelopment Council that was included in the package tonight. And that, that's the resolution the board would be holding on.
Hi, board of yours. Thank you. Um, I'll just build upon, but Bill just stated. You prefer me to stand there or can I do it?
Yeah, whatever you got.
Um, I'll just build upon the steps, uh, in addition to the May designation, May twenty twenty-four designation, where the planning board and council found the area as a, as a property satisfied the area criteria, redevelopment criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. There was, I did a presentation in front of this planning board on June twenty-fifth of this year as part when I presented the fourth round housing plan. I know we talked about a lot of different properties that night, but on June twenty-fifth, one of those slides was a significant part of our fourth round housing plan were these same properties. So we're advancing a zoning mechanism or a compliance mechanism that's outlined in our prior affordable housing plans, which is very important to mention. Um, on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, the developer and his team made a presentation to the Township Council where they went through the entire development proposal, received feedback from the council. We have also received three sets of comments, one from the Downtown Beautification Committee, one from our Township Police, and one from our council. I'm prepared to go through those reports, but I will tell you, uh, we did get the Downtown Beautification Committee comments before we released our plans. So we were able to incorporate those comments and ingrain those and already address those within the plan itself. Um, as far as the Township Police comments are concerned, they specifically relate to traffic and the traffic study and pedestrian crossing, which I'm very comfortable is addressed already within the plan. There's, there's enough material that we don't, in my opinion, need to further amend the plan to address the comments were from the, that we got back from the police were specifically they're withholding further comment till they got it, till they receive the traffic study. They will get the traffic study at the time of a site plan application. And then there's further comments on pedestrian safety, sidewalks, and traffic calming measures, and we have sufficient material language within the redevelopment plan, in my opinion, to squarely address those comments from the police. And then also from the Township Council, there's a number of comments that I feel are already addressed or can be addressed within the text of the document itself. They speak to the residential amenities. Um, we have enough language in there to ensure that the amenities, the minimum and the maximum standards are, are provided for in the plan itself. And with respect to streetscape improvements and E Vs, bike racks, and so forth, those are all contained within the report itself. So in my opinion, we don't need to further edit the document to ensure that each and every one of those comments are fully addressed at the time of site plan approval. The project itself is, I have a handout tonight, which I'll, I'll just walk through very quickly. The first is an aerial map, and for the record, all of the handouts that I I gave you tonight are already contained in the redevelopment plan. So there's no new exhibit being introduced tonight. These are the same maps, same exhibits already within the plan itself. We just blew them up and put them on a larger sheet, a little bit easier to read. The first sheet is the aerial map that depicts the properties. Like we said, there have already been declared inherently in redevelopment. You can see it's Block seven oh two, Lot four, Block seven oh two, Lot six is where the building is gonna go. And then there's a portion of Block seven point oh two, Lot seventeen point oh one of the existing surface parking lot that will be deed restricted and used for, to satisfy the parking requirement. So those are the three properties that we're talking about tonight. You could see that the property is immediately adjacent and contiguous to Terrace, the Terrace project that has been constructed. And it fronts on Springfield Avenue and Sherman Avenue. This project was part of our third round affordable housing plan. It's an inclusionary housing project. It was one of our zoning mechanisms, a compliance mechanisms in the third round. And what we're talking about tonight is one of the mechanisms that the town's gonna use to satisfy its fourth round obligation. Um, the buildings are side by side, developed by the same property owner, by the same developer. Um, I had an opportunity to tour the terrace inside and out. Um, it's a beautiful building, a lot of amenities, um, a lot of space in the building, uh, for the residents. And that used to be the former movie theater building. So what this redevelopment plan does is it's introduced by the council and it's adopted as an ordinance. And when it's adopted, it puts the zoning in place. But, but the beauty of redevelopment is it doesn't have to just focus on strict zoning, height, width, depth, building setbacks, bulk requirements. As you can see, the, the document is rather long and it speaks about many different design criteria. Uh, and I'm prepared to go through every one of those in depth, but the, the long and short of it is this will put together the zoning for a thirty-three family rental unit project. So there'll be thirty-three residential units in a mixed-use building. There will be a commercial retail space along Springfield Avenue. So there's not a blank wall or anything there. That was one of the items that we discussed. The parking, as you look in at your map, you would enter the building off of Sherman Avenue, very similar that you currently do on Terrace One. You enter the building off of Sherman Avenue in a garage, a door goes up, you pull in and, and so forth. Um, it would operate and look and feel very similar to the existing building that is there. The second sheet on the handout is, starts a series.
It's like it says, going first about the first document.
Sure.
The, under the, uh, the block of parking area, Block, uh, portion of Block seven oh two, Lot seventeen oh one.
Mm-hmm.
Will that, will that be marked as exclusive use for this redevelopment? Or what's the probability that you can have encroachment from other people in that area?
That, it can be signed and, uh, space is assigned and, uh, for the residents for this particular building. At that point, it, it almost becomes like a a zoning policing issue as to making sure that the right car is in the right space. But when, again, tonight, we're just putting the zoning in place if we adopt it, if we move forward with redevelopment plan. To be very clear to everybody on the planning board, dude, after this process, there's gonna be a detailed site plan application submitted to this board. There's gonna be detailed engineering drawings, architectural drawings, traffic reports, stormer management reports, T R C Technical Review Committee meetings where we go through all of the documents with all of the professionals even before they get to a public hearing. So, uh, these questions, and I'm sure all of you have many more, and I'm prepared to answer them, but a lot of those I'm gonna have to bundle and we're gonna put them in that category of we will, that's a great comment, but it's gonna be addressed at the time of the site plan application. Because as, uh, the drawings that I have for you tonight are the extent of the architectural drawings and the concept drawings that we have for this redevelopment plan. There's, we don't have a set of detailed drawings of the site, civil, traffic, parking, signage, how the property, how the spaces will be assigned to each unit. Um, the developer and his professionals will have to answer those questions when we get in front of the, the planning board for the site plan. That's a good question. We are using that portion of the property to support the property. You could see there's a little bit of a disconnect, but it's within walking distance, it's close by. And what we're trying to do is make use of under a lot, underutilized surface parking that is sitting there today. And instead, we're gonna utilize it to support this redevelopment. However, we're also, there's a further exhibits in the redevelopment plan where we did a parking analysis to make sure that we're also not encroaching upon or hurting the existing retail space, including delicious heights and the other retail stores that are to remain that are also supported by that same surface parking lot. So not to jump ahead to answer your question, but there's other exhibits in the redevelopment plan where we show the breakdown and say these spaces are dedicated and deed restricted for this particular building. There are, you know, you may ask the question, what about the other portion of the parking on Block seven oh two, Lot seventeen point oh one? We need that, the developer, the owner needs that to support the other retail spaces.
Including to your questions, the space allocated, the parking space allocated to the Terrace now has signage.
Yeah, so you'd have signs for this is for parking for Terrace two and you'd have a sign space.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, and.
I would presume there'll be signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Cool.
I have a follow-up process question, but I think I'll save it for the end. As you mentioned, the T R C, yeah, one, okay. Uh, you mentioned the T R C, and I don't think a planning board member is represented on the T R C. I'm wondering if this might be a good project to involve them there so that we can get, we can be involved with questions and answers at the T R C, so that by the time it comes back here, it actually make it easier for this process. Is that true? We don't have a member on the T R C?
Yep.
Jean is on the T R C?
Yeah.
Uh, does she represent Planning Board or D B C?
D B C R C.
And so one of you can rep, okay, so that, that actually, okay.
Yeah.
It's open.
Good.
Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and, um, those site plans, that site plan application that's gonna be forthcoming has to comply with this document. That's what we're trying to do is put this master plan zoning, the design standards in place, customize for this particular project. That's the whole purpose of doing the redevelopment plan. And the next couple of sheets, the next couple of sheets are, it's, the first one, A one point one is a concept plan of the lower level, very similar to Terrace One. If you're familiar with that building, you entered a building off of Sherman Avenue, one garage, one driveway in. Just like Terrace One, we call this one Terrace Two, but it's gonna operate the same way. Drive-in, lower levels, all parking, and there are some amenities, and there is your entry uh, very similar to the building right next door. You enter off of a lobby which has a double door, you go up to the elevator to your floor. So it operates and it's gonna look very similar to the first one. Next sheet is A one point two. Now, on the bottom of the sheet, Sherman Avenue, you're actually on the second level of the building. On, like, because of the changing grade, up on Springfield Avenue, you're up on the first elevation. So one thing that's very important to mention in here is what we're trying to do as we develop these concepts is mimic the height, the scale, the mass of Terrace One. So this is almost like a sister building, both three stories, both thirty-six feet, when you're on front, in front of the street. And then in between, there's a transition where it goes at a grade. So up on Springfield Avenue, there's, you can see retail space says fifteen hundred and six. Just keep in mind, these are concept drawings. When you perfect them and you, they submit the final architectural and engineering drawings, these numbers will change, they should change a little bit. Um, but off of Springfield Avenue, we have the retail space. And then the units are behind that. As you get to the bottom of the plan, now you're on the second floor, and those are the, the rest of the units on, uh, on the draw, on that first floor. You can see on your right side of the plan that architect did a very good job of breaking down the unit count and they provide the spaces. But if you look at the size of the units, they're very nice sized units. We're not talking very tiny units, even the cull units, I'm happy to see, where you see two-bedroom cull, that's two-bedroom affordable unit. You're approaching nine hundred, eight hundred thirty-five square feet, so it's a nice, it's a nice sized unit. The three-bedroom cull units, eleven hundred and fifty square feet. These are very healthy units for affordable housing units that are within a project. Sheet A one point three, second floor. Actually, it's the second floor if you're on Springfield Avenue. It's really the third floor if you're on Sherman Avenue. More units. There are, you can see the designation of whether it's a market or if it's a cull unit, that's the affordable unit. That's what, what we're trying to collect here. The size of the units again are, are all of a very nice size. And then finally, the third floor. The third floor does not extend to Sherman Avenue, just like the existing Terrace building. When you go out there, it's the appearance of three stories on Sherman. And the third floor extends out to Springfield. On the, on the upper level, you see an outdoor amenity space with a club room for the residents. So if you live in this building, you have access, all of the residents, even the affordable units have access to the outdoor amenity space that's on the upper level. And then we have two sheets, or I gave it two or one, of one sheet of the building elevations. Sheet is A four point zero.
I have just a quick question. Sure. On your report, take thirty-two, you say the maximum height of the building is thirty-six feet, and on these drawings, it shows it at thirty-nine feet.
I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to, that's thirty-nine feet, ten inches. That's being measured to a parapet that's added, which it does allow for. I think the actual, the actual building itself, it's thirty-six feet. There's a couple of, there should actually be a separate dimension. I see what you're referring to, but that piece of trim that they've placed on the upper level that.
That's not included in the building height.
That's treated differently. The building mass where the brick stops, where the, the actual building is, is thirty-six. And then there's a three-foot, ten-inch, uh, it's, we call it parapet wall. They call it a fiber cement panel. It's a piece of decorative trim architectural element that is used to uh, provide an edge to the building and also hide mechanical units and give the, the, I'll get it, I'll show you on the, we take a look at some of the elevations, it may help, but that's not included within the actual building. Then there's a building elevation, there's two of them provided, sheet S two point zero and S two point one. S, start with S two point zero. This is the elevation off of Sherman Avenue. You can see the garage door, very similar to the building right next door. That's where the residents would drive into the building and to the right of that entrance is the entrance into the lobby. And there's amenity space on the corner with the two levels above. And you can see the piece of trim that goes where the brick stops and the panel stops and the party plank stops. There's a, there's a piece of trim architectural element, parapet wall that extends. It's not necessarily at the building wall, it's set back a little bit. Uh, that's that three-foot, ten-inch piece. And then, flip the page. Two point one. Again, the appearance of three stories along Springfield Avenue. And there's a side-by-side comparison. You can see the terrace that is already constructed. And then this building designed by the same architect as Terrace One, you can see the Terrace Two to the right of it. Now, I just wanna stretch the, emphasize something that's throughout the redevelopment plan. It talks to that these are conceptual drawings. The board hasn't had any input yet on the details, the colors, the building materials, the finishes, and all of the different elements. And so that's something that's gonna be further discussed with the planning board and the T R C. So there's talk about, you know, a couple of concerns about some of the edges or, uh, that the corner of the building in some of the comments that I received, I just wanted make sure everybody has a clear understanding. These are not the final. Okay, these are conceptual artist renderings at this point, and they'll, they'll be further refined. But it's a starting point. What I wanted to do was just briefly walk through the highlight elements of the plan itself. And I'm happy to stop at any point and get more detail of at any particular spot, but the plan that I'm talking about is off of the September tenth, twenty twenty-five redevelopment plan entitled Terrace Two Redevelopment Plan prepared by my office. There's, section one really just gives you the background of the statutory basis for the redevelopment plan. Why are we doing this? The history, the redevelopment process. There's, it's basically a history lesson of how we got here tonight. And you see the photographs of how it's been developed over the years. I'm not gonna go through any of these photos. I've already presented that as part of the redevelopment study. There's a very detailed conversation about the affordable housing, the prior round, third round, fourth round. The important part of this is we presented a plan in June twenty twenty-five this year. That plan was approved by the planning board, endorsed by council, submitted down to the state, and we collectively said as a community, this is a project, a mixed-use project that we're gonna use to help satisfy our obligations. And I think squarely exactly what we're doing this evening, we're advancing that. So in my world, that's very important. There's also a twenty percent set aside on this project, whereas the prior third round projects had fifteen. Every project in the fourth round that's set aside has been increased to twenty percent. It's very important, fewer projects to meet our obligation, higher set aside. A public purpose, master plan goals, consistency. This project squarely advances our fourth round housing element, the fair share plan, the whole presentation that we made in our, in our plan. So essentially, it shows the courts, Fairshire Housing, and all of the people I need to report back to as far as status is concerned is we're doing what we said we're gonna do, and we're doing if I redevelop in this property. Section three is the one section of the report that has all of the bulk, the design requirements. If there's any one section of this report, that's the section that I would focus on. It gets into the technical bulk requirements, density, the uses, and, and all of the requirements for when they engineer the project. Very similar, not exact, but very similar to Terrace One with those requirements. Again, we don't have the traffic report yet. We don't have a storm order management report. It requires a lot of work by the developer to address all these requirements. Um, there was a lot of questions about the E V, the electric vehicle for parking.
I just, it's two point two, uh, just, just for clarification for the board strategically and, and the community.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, these redevelopment plans are somewhat prescriptive in terms of whether they're crafted, you know? And then it said, but the planning board may authorize a de minimis design waiver. So when the exact, when the actual application comes and it's considered out of the merits, what is, what does de minimis mean? And what flexibility does that give the board to consider reality relative to the strategic plan?
Sure. Later on in the report, at the end of the report, I think it's six point two, it, it's, it goes into detail about what that relief is and it spells it out. But essentially, the, this planning board doesn't have the authorization or the authority to change the use, to grant a D variance, to increase the height, the density, um, to say we don't want a use here, or we don't want the commercial space or so forth. Uh, that would be a change in the redevelopment plan that would be, that would require going back to the Township Council and amending the redevelopment plan. However, and when they come in, they, when the applicant submits his site plan application, if there's a lot baked into this, there's a lot of standards that are, that are installed in this report here. And if they feel they need relief, or I'm not gonna make their argument for them, but if they feel that they need, uh, the parapet that we talked about, if we had, if there's a regulation in here that says that parapet cannot exceed three feet, and they come in and they demonstrate proof to this board that if it's three foot, two inches, or three foot, three inches, there's a benefit, and they explain that benefit, this board can grant that relief. But you have to take it, each one on its own merits. I mean, if there's a requirement that the sidewalk has to be eight feet wide or six feet wide, and they wanna ask the board saying, no, we need it to be five feet in this section for this reason, you would consider that, and you would consider the merits of that argument.
There's a huge amount of information on the E Vs, if you can just give some color as to the significance or lack thereof, and to what degree that's statutory or driven by the towns, that's where it is.
The E V ordinance is statewide. The EV ordinance is statewide model ordinance or mandated, model ordinance and mandated ordinance. And when you see language, language in here that they only have to put in to make ready to begin with, that's what the state statute requires. So I don't have the authority to go one step further than that, demand something at a higher level. When it says it doesn't, they, they can do them over a period of time and I think it's up to six years, people are like, why, but. I, I'm not allowed to cut down that timeframe from six years down to at the time of construction. That's what's permitted and that's what's spelled out in the statewide EV ordinance. So, there's also a reduction allowed, but we've already taken that into consideration that. They cannot further reduce the number of parking spaces because that's already baked into our numbers, so that is addressed in our plan. But almost all of, or all of the statewide EV. Ordinance required, requirements are captured and brought into this plan, but as a municipality, I am not allowed to. Amend those or make them more stringent. Section. Three again, project design standards and conditions, it gets, again, it gets into a lot of detail, but I just want to, I'm trying to hit the highlights of the. Comments that I had in front of me also, as I go through a document. Streetscape improvements, street trees, trash receptacles, bikes. Pavers, all of those items are addressed in this redevelopment plan and they, along their entire front ditch. They have to comply and the developer has agreed to do all of those streetscape improvements. Again, that's not something that you'll find in a drawing in here, this is a requirement so that when they do the actual plans, they have to address them. Uh, there's one comment throughout all of these comments. That is consistent and I'm on the bottom of page thirty five and I just want to spend one minute on this one because it kept coming up. And that is brought up by the police, by the council. By the downtown beautification committee and it's. There's been a lot of concern or talk about pedestrian safety and making sure there's proper. Streets, not only streetscape improvements, but pedestrian crossings, especially across Springfield Avenue. So we included language in here that the project's going to contribute to the construction and our installation of traffic calming measures. Um, what specifically they are, how they're designed, we're not there yet. Sure, please.
This is my shame, shameless plug, we have a complete streets committee now.
Yep.
So this should be part, hopefully part of the process.
Absolutely.
See if it's appropriate and not overburdening for the project.
Absolutely, it should be and we're bringing more residents into this area. And we want to make sure that we put the measures in place for when these residents come into these new buildings.
When you say contribute, does that mean it's going to be a percentage of what it's going to cost, is the township going to have a, a percentage as well?
Yes, the township would have a percentage as well, but. This developer would contribute to what those improvements are and what those costs are, none of it. All, none of that has been calculated, designed, I don't even feel.
That'll be a later decision about what the percentages are.
Well, first, what are the improvements? I don't, I don't even know what the improvements are.
When you say contribute, like I can say, I'll contribute, you know, one percent or I contribute fifty percent and that's a big difference.
Yes, um, that's all part of, and it goes on top of page thirty six. Um, it shall be negotiated as part of the redevelopment agreement and or financial agreement. So in my world, there's, there's a redevelopment study, there's a redevelopment plan. And that's kind of where I let off and then the attorneys prepare a redevelopment agreement. And a financial agreement, so there's two more. Significant documents that get into the financials. Um, of this project that come after tonight's redevelopment plan. And that would all be discussed, outlined. In those, in those documents. Honestly, we don't know what those improvements are yet, I would like, I, I would like to know what the design is and what it's going to look like and then from there you go.
We only demand the most expensive pedestrian stuff that is.
It's also a county roadway, so it's coordinating with the county and the county standards. On Springfield Avenue, so I don't want to get ahead of myself, but um. It's, you know, we have our board engineer involved, we have our township council and the county of Union all involved in those improvements.
We, yeah, and just so it's on the record, we do consider cost because there's some expensive stuff. That if you over leveraged stuff, you can go pretty crazy, so the cost is a big consideration, sometimes the township should start right paying for it. No.
Um, moving on to page twenty seven, there's a whole section on the architectural design standards and programming. Not to repeat it, but what you have tonight in front of you are initial renderings. They're going to be further refined based on the comments that we have received. As it goes forward through that process, we do have language in there that says that all four or all, every. Elevation of the building shall be designed to the same level of architectural en- interest, use of materials. So there's no front and then on the side, it's like a blank wall or anything. The entire building, because it's going to be exposed on all four sides. It's very important, but the developer did a great job in doing the terrace building that's already up there, so. We just want to make sure that all four sides of the building are designed to the same level. Um, phasing is going to be one phase, electric vehicle parking I've touched upon. Um, streetscape and landscaping improvements, pedestrian access, circulation, traffic are all items. That will are, I think, very well addressed in the plan. What they look like, I don't have any of the details yet, that all has to be prepared. Um, gets into the provisions of affordable housing, I don't need to. Dwell on this, although there's a lot of requirements that the developer has to address so that we make sure that they're credit worthy units. It's all baked in here. And then finally, the last major issue is green building and sustainability. And incorporating green building design components into the project is very important. We give a number of possible alternatives, but at the end of the day, it's up to the developer and his professionals to move forward with. These components as they, as they design the job and they present it to the planning board. The rest of it is. Section five, section six, I don't, I don't want to say it's not important, but it, it's. Uh, more standard language and it talks about procedure, how we move forward from here. Which is after the adoption of the redevelopment plan. It goes back to the township council and then it's up to the developers to submit a site plan application. I'm happy to, if I went too quickly, I'm happy to go back and touch upon any major. Uh. Component of it or answer any questions that you have. Just to reassure everybody that this is just the beginning of, puts the zoning in place and now they have to, they get to work. Once this is adopted.
My only question is, um, you know, so we're taking down a building that has. Six offices, eight offices, what is, what is, what Sherman, the Sherman professional building have, eight?
Think it, I, you know what, I don't want to guess, it's in the report as part of my redevelopment.
Okay, so it's that building and then uh, the house that looks like it should be at the beach.
Yes, which is those parts showing.
Right, so now we're putting in a lot of apartments. Um, my only concern is like our infrastructure obviously is aging, is this new building going to have a bigger impact? On our sewer? Or any other infrastructure? That we have to think about.
I don't want to do, I don't want to just. Throw out an answer, I would have to look at the volume of. The, the correct way of answering it would be, look at the volume of the office building when it was fully occupied and that peak below. And then the houses isn't going to generate anything, so that's like a throw in. Um, and then compare that versus the, the, the thirty three units and the little commercial space that's in this building. If you compare the two, I think there would, I think the sewer. Calculations would show a slight net increase, but I don't want to start guessing what that number would be, I'm not prepared.
So when the developer comes to us the second time, you know, after this is all done, um. And there needs to be an up, if there's an upgrade for. Infrastructure, that is the time that we talk about that.
Yeah, and we capture that through the connection fees that we have in place, which are not insignificant, insignificant. So the, the adoption of that ordinance that put that, those connection fees in place is a fee that the developer pays towards. The infrastructure improvement, specifically our sanitary sewer.
Right, we know there's going to be a lot more sewer action. Because it's going to be thirty three units compared to whatever Sherman Avenue is in the beach house. So, do we need to think about upgrading what's on, like, I don't, I don't know what's under there, you know, my, I flushed my toilet and it happens? Do we need to think about upgrading? What's under there, taking things to the sewer or is that something that we don't talk, we don't have to worry about that tonight, but we'll talk about that later?
Well, it's going to be the developer's responsibility to get what's called a treatment works approval, there's a whole sanitary si- sanitary sewer system. Plan, engineering, design and permitting requirement just for sanitary sewer. That the developer is responsible for his engineer to make sure there's sufficient. Pipe size, conveyance and so forth when they move the project forward. I'm sure his engineer is going to do a study saying. Office building had a max flow of X plus the beach house was a Y and now we're at Z, the delta is. You know, whatever it is and that's what you focus on.
Okay.
I don't think it's going to be substantial, but I believe it will be an increase. There's also requirements in here that we're going to talk, take a look at stormwater management. In that parking lot, because there's issues with the water being detained and ponding in the parking lot when. That's part of the requirements in here.
Do you know, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you know, um, the amount of impervious surface that? Is it, it's got to be increasing a, a little, but it can't be that much because that Sherman Avenue building. Is, you know.
You know what's going to.
It's not high, but it's, it's wide.
Yeah, the increase is going to be around.
And big parking lot, yeah.
The increase is going to be around the beach house or a, a, around where I, what you, what I'm looking at the photo on page twelve. It's the single, small little cottage that is on Springfield and the grass, the lawn, the front lawn and the sides of that building. That's the increase of impervious coverage on this private.
Thank you.
But, going back to all of our planning documents and all of our housing plans and that. You know, there's one, we just kept reinforcing that we, if we have this obligation, one of the places we want to address them is in our downtown.
Right.
And that's exactly what happened with Terrace One and we're basically doing it again. Same developer, same design team right next.
And I will say like, one of the biggest complaints from residents is our downtown such a mishmash and I think having two buildings that actually go together. Is going to be really lovely, you know?
I've heard a lot of comments that I, and, and, and in these reports that they talk about, the one had a little bit of wood design and. Those type of level of details we'll get into when we deal with the architectures.
But they definitely complement each other, um.
I really like the amenity space on the ground level when you're. When you're quote unquote behind the building, I like that, the, you know, the, on Sherman, that whole corner on the right is, I like the glass. I like that it's going to be active, that it's going to be an amenity space, it's not going to be a dead wall or.
Back of the buildings.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not looking at a dumpster, I'm not looking at a blank cold wall, that's going to be activated as an amenity space. I, I really like that and then when you go back up on Springfield, we got that commercial space, so that's going to activate along. Springfield Avenue, so I like, I like all of those features.
And thinking about it in terms of what we're doing with Sherman Avenue. It's not a backstreet, it's not going to be a backstreet anymore, it's a parallel.
Yeah, a parallel.
Right, yeah, so it's a little nice.
And on the plans, the developer has placed a sidewalk, a curvilinear sidewalk that. That's going to go in between both of the buildings, Springfield Avenue down to Sherman Avenue, so it's going to. Activate all of the buildings, this would be a light, a, a walkway. With lighting along it and I think it's going to soften. The, at the yard in between the two buildings and it's going to feel more like it's, you know, both of the buildings are going to go together.
Much more uniform than it is now, on both sides.
Absolutely, I mean, I really, I mean, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to tour the inside of, of the building that's there, but it's worth your while. I mean, it's a spectacular building that. The amenity spaces, the design, when you're going through there, it's just, they did a spectacular job. The unit sizes are really nice, you're not, you don't feel like you're in one of those shoeboxes, it really is, the construction's fabulous. That, and when you go out on the terraces and you go out on the, the, the terraces, they're really, really nice open spaces.
That's one of the benefits of this project is that we already had the first project to measure it up against.
Yeah.
Those, it's a, it's a known quantity.
Yeah, it's a known quantity and we're replacing two structures. Um, with, with this one and we're also going to utilize that surface parking lot a little bit better, so. And we're addressing our obligation, so we're trying to do it the right way, it's mixed use, we have some commercial space, we don't have the blank walls. Uh, I, I think it's a, a excellent piece of the puzzle that we're trying to put together.
You have the deed restrictions on the co-units, just like the parking area. Is that going to be a standards, is that going to be a thirty year deed or strict?
In the fourth round, it's forty years.
Everything's forty?
Yeah, that's another change, in the third round it was thirty years, in the fourth round it's forty years.
So we take that into account as the years go by, as some of those deeds expire, the restrictions.
Must be here when that expires, but.
But there are ones expiring every year.
Oh yeah, we're look, we're, we're doing, it's called extension of controls.
Right.
Ones that the town, the town has a long history of compliance and building and, and satisfying its obligation, but one of our. Components or mechanisms to satisfy our fourth round is going back to our prior rounds, identifying the units that are expiring. In the fourth round and that have been, and that are eligible, which is a little bit trickier, but and then extend those, so.
Because we're, we're, we have a certain amount we have to, are obligated to put in over the next ten years. And, and we're counting for those, but now we also have other ones that are expiring, where those restrictions are no longer in place.
Want to extend those.
Yeah, I just found out in my development today, there's seven, six units that next year and the year after could.
Could go on.
Could go, could go market.
And those create offsets to the new obligations though, right, if they do get extended, they get cleared.
They do, okay.
Actually, they qualify, yeah. They have to qualify, there's a lot of requirements you have to go through, but. If there's one statement that every, every municipality, every night is make sure every unit that is eligible to be extended is extended.
Right, they want to minimize the impact, yeah.
Absolutely.
Good.
Right.
Thank you.
The other questions or comments from the board?
Um, I'll open it up to the public if anyone has any questions for the planner.
No, I have no question.
Fair enough, very good. Um. At this stage, feel to read.
Well, there can be a discussion, uh, but ultimately the, the resolution, uh, contains a number of whereas clauses that are really just historical. As to how we got here, uh, they're now there for section says be resolved by the township, but like, like the planning board. Uh, playing board finds that the redevelopment plan with redevelopment area is consistent with township master plan. And recommends the township council adopt the redevelopment, so. And then being, you know, authorizing and directed to township, uh, council. So that would be the action, but if the, you know, board has any discussion that it wants to take, do that. Or if you want to just make motion to adopt it, or that as well.
All right, any comments before we vote?
Need a motion.
We need a, a motion.
We need a motion.
Second.
Very good, uh.
Motion is for the action and for the ma- memorialization.
Yes.
Mister Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Pogue?
Yes.
Mister Popolo?
Yes.
Mister Crowe?
Yes.
Mister Sternheim?
Yes.
Mister Leo?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Very good, um. If there's something else on the agenda, I move it to adjournments. All right. Or slash on to that thing, oh, I have. Do we, um.
I think in correspondence, I don't know if there's any actual necessary, there was a, a letter from the engineer.
There was a letter talking about the removal of, uh, trees and other debris from the Passaic River.
It's just a note, notification, application that made the state with regard to the clearing of that.
There's just no action or response required.
No actions required, but of course, it's really informational.
Against that? I vote for adjournment, second. All in all favor?
Fine.
Thank you, thank you, good job Kevin. All right, I do this so frequently.